Yeah.
It's two Fridays I've been over here also.
Yeah, I mean, every time I get home and I see it on Facebook and I don't make leave again. And I think I first remember that it's five to eight. Yeah, she is. That's a big step.
That group are Christmas.
Oh, did you have a lot of prayers?
I'm done. That's good.
I bet he do it.
All right, just as much as the night, but it's still doggone.
Oh, I bet, yeah.
Don't do a lot.
She knows perfect that's her.
Got in the summer of the. Sweet house Saturday. Well, couple different years.
Oh.
When you talk about. That's not a tall. Full flavor hard.
Really? Oh, maybe it'd be good.
Something like that. Bodie sweet called the other. It was hard to chew it.
Well, it looks like it's a just too too long gone.
They started this last Wednesday when the cell.
Let's stand do the pledge, please. I plead. The United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, he that has it for our own. Dick, public discussion.
If it's the bridge, he's on the agenda.
He's on agenda.
If if that's all you're here for.
Casey.
Unless we want to talk about the engineer, which is on later on too.
It's up to you.
Well, I'll mention or you guys can let the engineers contract lapse. And he can still work for you. You could make one that's taxpayer and supervisor friendly. He doesn't seem to think he has to answer to anybody anymore. That's not the case. Some supervisors said we can't do anything with it. No, that's not the way it should be. You can't let his contract lapse and have the county attorney write one that's fairly when he can be hired by three and takes five to firing. He's not held responsible for anything he does. He gets paid a full year if he's terminated. Those aren't.
Six, six months.
Okay, six months. But that's not a standard contract. He doesn't think he thinks he's got this county to his own little realm and he rules it. He's an employee. He needs to be reminded of that. If you'd let his contract lapse, he can still work. Write up a new contract. He has an option to sign it or not sign. But we're we've given him too much power and he either views on it.
Basically, Mr. Walker for giving me that name he did. I got old lady. She was not scared of me. She says she was just for the record that she was just surprised how it turned from bone to bone right now. She goes, I wasn't scared, but she goes, I wasn't worried that you're gonna come after your dad like that. So, but she was apologized to me because she thought it made me learn bad, which I said, no, don't worry about it. But like I said, I would like to thank you for giving me that name so I could get that all cleared up. Thank you.
We're up to approve the agenda minutes dated July eleventh. And well, the two minutes for twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Ellen Decker. Any discussion on the motion? Being not all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried unanimously. Everybody looked at claims.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I have a motion to approve the claims. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have. Any questions on the claim? Any comments? Yes. All those in favor of approving the claims, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried.
This one sitting in check.
All one's there.
Dan, you're up.
Okay. Hey, so. Good morning, everybody. My report for June. Pretty busy month. I had forty-three phone calls and fifty-four messages. Fifty-eight walk-ins, twenty-one scheduled appointments. Two appointments out of office. We did a veteran transport and we were able to get five parry gates repaired as well. Currently tracking eleven hundred sixty-seven records in the system. I've got forty-two sitting open in VA Claims Register. Waiting for them to act on those. I have six that are awaiting decision. I have fourteen under development that I'm working on. One supplemental and then I completed one VA healthcare enrollment. Recently. Completed District Five training in Marshalltown last Friday over at the Iowa Veterans. I'll give you a better update on. My trip over there here on my next report. It was really quite interesting. It was not what I expected. It's more like a college campus. In a sense, as opposed to a nursing home and took a few pictures. I'll put those in there. Veterans got their own little gardens they can tender. There's little cottages at the vets home for families to stay, especially if someone's near their end of life. Really quite quite a facility. So I'll I'll give you more of an update on that. Standing by to meet with the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs and Assist with any training coordination for our fall conference. Could be could be in October, might be as late as November. We don't know yet. The contracts have been let out for bid as far as the venue. You don't have one yet that I'm aware of. I am going to be online today to meet with our state Board of Directors for our association at eleven o'clock. Those are some things we're gonna talk about. Visibility on. I did not have any outreach activity for June as scheduled because I did a military funeral honor in lieu of that. But for July, I'm looking to attend the Economic Development Breakfast later here next week. And then that's night of the races and helping with the colored part. We did get the OLS of Office and our three new commissioners sworn in and in process. Thank you for that. So they hit the ground running. We'll continue to focus on VA healthcare enrollment. That PACD Act deadline is coming up. And I believe August through September, and then after that, they go back to the asset piece of that for determination. So I'm trying to get as many enrolled in that as I can. I'll continue training with the PACD Act claims. I'm actually working to Iowa Veteran Trust Fund applications. One is for dental assistance. The other one is to replace a tub and install a shower. Because veterans' severance go falling. So we don't want that to happen. So we're trying to get the shower. Still waiting for the state grant report from IDVA. I thought maybe that was just my report, but it sounds like a lot of my peers are also waiting on those funds to be released. So I will update you when I receive those. I did. Put in some PACD Act updates. There's an impact in your package. It just kind of gives the highlights of what's going on with some of those deadlines. And then also I put in their information regarding the tenure of the commissioners and how long their terms are and when they're due to expire and attractive as well. Did complete that gender diversity thing that the auditor sent out for the state. And we got the asset visibility inventory completed from my department. No issues there. Subject to your questions. That's really all I have at this time.
What's your guess on eleven hundred and sixty-two records? How many? Are they all active?
There's there are some that are deceased, both military spouse and veteran. And then some of them are just the veteran, but the spouse survives. And I don't have the ability to build a query to structure a report. So I can refine that number yet. I'm working with VetPro to be able to do that. In retrospect, I could I could more table that. But unfortunately, right now, it it just have to be at my guess and my golly. So active records of that eleven sixty-seven would probably be more appropriate to about eleven twenty. Because we lose about forty veterans per year, forty to forty-five. So just a rough estimate, about eleven twenty-ish for active. But I'll I'll try and see what I can do about prod those guys along.
Because that's your new program, right?
That's my new program, yeah. They're still working on some issues yet. The report features unfortunately are not as robust as the vet respect was. If that one's going away. Some people who didn't transition now are not happy with what they're being offered as a replacement. So I kind of am glad I didn't go that route anyway. We'll get those numbers tighter a little bit, so. Any other questions?
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Have a good day, guys.
You too.
We're up to possible discussion decision bridge on one sixty-five Avenue between two hundred and fifty Street and two hundred and sixty Street on me, although it's up to Dick. You want Doug up here?
No.
You don't?
He does need to be. What I've got to say only affects you guys mainly. Here's the deal. I sat here to bit my tongue last week when he said that if I put crossing, it has to be up to standards. That's why I sent those pictures. That's a Class A road from the north. That doesn't look like a Class A road. I'd love you guys to top that hill at fifty without having a roll bar and a helmet because and that's a public road there. But the piece from my ground to just north of the bridge for thirty years. That man sat in the engineer's office as an assistant or as the main engineer. Back in nineteen ninety-one, I believe it was, they created a Level C road added by House File four nineteen Code of Iowa Section three oh nine point five seven. A Level C road may be established by the supervisors by ordinance or resolution. What it does is it closes the road. It doesn't close the road. The company owns the road. We put gates in. The only person that has a lock for that gate is me or any other person that needs to use that. If there's no access past that gate for anybody, they don't get a key for it. That's been on the for thirty years I've been trying to get access to cross that road with any means.
What was that code section you said?
House File four nineteen code section three oh nine point five seven.
Okay, and what was the House File?
House File four nineteen.
From this last year?
No, nineteen ninety-one.
Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to get. As those pictures show, he's vacated that road from my lane to the old bridge. I have one access to some land north of that, my lane.
How does all is that alliance poles there? How they use?
Corn belt.
It's corn belt?
Belt.
They use the road, I'm assuming?
They usually come in from south and come in from the north. They usually use four-wheelers. Most of the time they just fly with a helicopter and inspect it, but they do come in with four-wheelers.
And there's barricades on both ends of the bridge where it's at?
At this time.
Is there just the I thought I saw on the one that had a part of a picture, road closed bridge out? Is that all that's at the edge of the
Yes.
road to the north and south?
Yes.
Okay.
I went up and drove. Go up there, look at it when I saw it on the agenda. I drove it years ago and I remember I accidentally went down that road and realized.
And there's a lot of semi speeds of any every new speed semi driver. That road doesn't show. It's not going through. So they come up. They usually end up asking if they can turn around in my yard because it's a pain to back up that that road, especially in the winter. It's a little icy. But he's known about that for thirty years. That has fought me on putting anything across that area, which and I could have had a Level C road, which would have been beneficial to me. By that, the county's engineers office has negatively impacted my bottom line for thirty years because of the crossing not being allowed. And you guys can allow it without his permission. You guys control that. But that north road coming down. That's land may go up for auction. Here's the state of Miami. And the only access to that is just north of that barricade on the other side of the bridge. I talked to the auctioneer and the appraiser. They both said that the land value is will be hugely impacted by that being such a pitiful road.
Which 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 chunk is that, Dan?
That's from the north down to the bridge from the north, where those big ruts are in that.
Okay, that'd be Greg Albert's?
Greg Albert's property down there, two guests. But he claimed I had standards to live up to. So does he. That road is a Level A road. And that will definitely affect the value of that state sale given what we have because that road is pitiful. There's nobody gonna wanna drive down that road. Especially if you start taking the props off that after they somebody else if somebody else were to buy that.
If I'm hearing you correctly. Your desire is to put in a bridge again and and have it as a potentially a Level C road where you or other landowners would then have access to that road.
It would only be me.
But not for the gen or you.
Because Greg Albert's access to his land on the south side, his south of
Okay.
where those signs are.
Yep, yep.
And his access is north of the barricade on the north end of the bridge.
Okay.
So I and I'd like to have input of where we put the gates too.
Sure.
I don't want them right on the edge of the bridge where and I'd like to have them at two foot so that I can open and close them at the winter when I try to get through it. But Greg Albert would still be able to access from the north. And if the road was brought up to what it should be. But if it isn't, that landsman will be worth very little if we have to pay half the price of it. Most people use semis nowadays. You wouldn't go up and down that road from the north with a semi. It's just not. But he's abandoned the road. It's virtually what he's done.
Well, I guess that's kind of what it looks like from the pictures.
I'd like to make him live up to standards that he he expect last week he sat there and said that if I put a bridge in, I had to have certain standards I had to meet. He could have said, hey, we can go up and let zero. They sat on that for thirty years. Thirty years I've been trying to get that. Not once has that been mentioned. Now, when I find that out, it just burns me. I'd like to say a lot of things that I'm not going to, but that's a jerk that does that sets on information like that for thirty years. It could have been. And I I request that you guys do create a Level C road to get that area either by ordinance or.
I think it'd be good to look up that house file and just to clarify the language there and and please look into it.
The code section should be able find find online. You.
Three oh nine five seven. You know, size the most smaller move, but nobody sees.
So, yeah, I guess service area C classification roads may have restricted access at a minimal level of maintenance as specified by the county board supervisors after consultation with the engineer. And it should adequately warn the public that access is limited. They can only be classified as a service area C by ordinance or resolution. So I guess what I would say, I don't think I don't think we can do this without consultation of the engineer, but we probably should have Doug up here, but I don't know if we need to have pod as well for ordinance or resolution, whatever form that should be in.
You can do S, but.
Either or, as it says.
On vacation here or there, so I may not attend the next one, but I presented my case that a Level C road is perfect for me. And and once those gates are up, they've got to have signage on it. If anybody crosses that, they are trespassing and they can be charged with trespass. So therefore, the bridge need not be up to every standard that is required for pedestrian travel.
And then you would install that bridge, right?
Install the bridge.
Okay.
But the way I read it, the county has to install the post, the gates of the signage. That's their duty to make it the way it's supposed to. And that and that for the Level C road. Heaven forbid somebody wants to put in a real bridge again someday. It just cut. They can do so. Pull it right back out of Level C and it can bounce right back up to a Level A road. At the discretion of the engineer and supervisors at any given time.
Would it be the board's wishes that we put it on the agenda at a future date when Dick is available and have the county attorney review the code section and give us some opinion on how it should be worded or if it can be done or can't be done?
That'd be fine. Yes.
Yeah. I I guess should we have a motion to direct the county engineer and attorney? Well, either or or both.
I think we should have it in the motion for both.
Yeah, that's that's what I was thinking both. So I'd make motion to direct the county engineer and attorney to look into classifying the road as discussed as Level C based on that code section three oh nine point five seven.
If you wanted in there that there's possibility that it walk up.
ATV bridge.
ATV bridge would be put across or?
I don't think that's necessary, right? I think the discussion is that direction, but I.
First step would be making it a Level C and then we can move forward after that.
So you're gonna you're gonna make another determination if a bridge can be put across?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we.
Is that sufficient?
I think we would address that later. Did you? Did I talk slow enough?
Yes.
Fair. That'd be a good idea.
Direct county engineer, county attorney to look into classifying one hundred and sixty-fifth Avenue between two hundred and fifty Street and two hundred and sixty-three as a class three road per Iowa code three oh nine two five seven.
S C.
C, sorry, I wrote three, but.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Class C.
Let's see.
Just a portion of that, not the whole thing. I always wanted to put the gate up there down by myself through that, just a small portion.
Just we we should be able to specify the location when we go through with action. It's the
Perfect.
building the foundation as far as.
Yeah, you're just wanting close to where the bridge is.
Yeah, from my lane. Or farther than on I want the maintainer to be able to drive past my lane before he hits the gate back into my lane.
Well, they're not maintaining it now anyway, so.
How about the north side? Is he gonna have room to get in there to blade?
He'll have. He can come from the north side. He can come and he can turn in Greg Albert's lane or enter back up into my lane or my dad's. It's not my it's my dad's lane into his. And he they've done it for they used to. People already used to do it.
Okay.
He used to be able to back up it.
We don't wanna make something that's impossible.
I don't know.
Yeah.
They can make that way.
Yeah, I I think when we get to the point of actually acting on it, we can set the specific area.
Any more discussion on the motion? Maybe none.
Yeah, second, yeah.
Oh. Sorry.
Josh was talking, but I don't know if he seconded it.
Yeah, I'll second it. I I thought I I didn't I didn't mention that. I was just clarifying, but yeah, I'll second it.
I knew you had said something, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is any discussion? Name none to a real call, please. Yes.
None.
Yes.
Walter.
Yes.
Deborah.
Yes.
Jerks.
Yes.
So do you want me to forward that information?
Doesn't matter.
Forward it to from board.
Okay.
Or include them both, I guess.
Yeah.
Is that what? There.
That works. Should be fine.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We are up to acknowledge transfers made by the auditor of two thousand five hundred nineteen dollars and thirty nine cents from general basic to secondary road. And nineteen thousand fifty five dollars and eleven cents from rural basic to secondary road. The transfers were made on July fifth. Any comments, discussion? If not, let the record show that we acknowledged them. Uh, wanna call Nick, taxes.
What's his, Tammy, you know his number? Wow, two thirty. Here we go. That's what the sheet's here for. Hey Nick, it's Kyle in the boardroom, do you wanna come in for the taxes? Perfect, thanks.
Just close to you, Kurt?
Yep. Or, well, in the same town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything in Laverne is close to me.
Sure.
Yeah.
Set some all. Morning, Nick.
Morning, morning.
Nick.
Morning, morning.
Yeah, Nick, you wanna give us the history on the abatement?
Kyle wants.
Pardon, pardon.
Sorry, pardon. Um, it sounds like the city of Westford, I.
Laverne.
You can just like you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Explain what's going on there.
Oh. Go ahead on my, Carter Nathier, the city council, um, but uh, no, we uh we've been working on getting possession of this property and it's probably the
Right on Main Street, crossing fire station, urgent stuff.
So, um we're, you know, the plan is to tear it down, but we're looking to clear up the liens against the houses and there's some back taxes that need to be paid. And then the city, um, and so we're asking for abatement per transfer to the city, you know, when that should happen. Um, so that they can move forward with cleaning up the community in that way. That's really something.
Yeah, as far as property tax, so on that, think of a piece property. It's very low by how they're trying to waste it. And then there's a five dollar grading just next to you, but the majority of it is uh um, part of the city of Laverne, they have the city special on it, so does Iowa. Lake regional water, and I think you've been in contact with them. Um, I can't remember how we left, but what they, what Iowa Lakes regional water was going to do with it.
They they usually are willing to work with us on.
Through the city, okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, but uh, yeah, then the city, I mean, since they're gonna be the ones taking it over, um, I don't know, I might when this transaction takes place, what we might need to do is have the city just send us a letter.
Yep.
Or the the city or council or the council, hey, take these abatements off, so or these uh specials off, so so we really would not to abate those. And if the Iowa Lakes Regional works with you on something, um that would would have to get in contact with them also so we can get it off our books, so. But uh, yes, towards property tax go on that, it's it's very minimal.
Right.
So.
Just trying to get everything cleared up and zeroed out.
Exactly.
Transferred over, yeah.
Little triangle piece.
Yep.
He has two little.
There.
Shape property.
I didn't know which one.
I didn't know if it was the both of them or not of it.
Both, oh, he's got two lots there.
Yeah, I have two little triangles there, looks like, so.
Okay.
Hell, there are two.
Yep. And there was a several thousand dollar lien against the property and I I met with the property owner who lives in West Des Moines now.
Okay.
Um, and we signed that paper over, um, so.
Oh.
To to have that lien forgiven as well with Mesrile Trimmer.
Yeah. So that was not like a city special or anything like that.
No, that was a separate.
I mean, with so many things.
But been working on this one for a while.
Yeah, yeah, I know. You know, so, I mean, um, I I think if we can get um, the city and Iowa Lakes to to send us something saying, you know, please take these off and Iowa Lakes has a preliminary coming on for this coming fall, have get that taken care of also, um, I I would recommend pay a little bit of taxes there are on it so the city can go ahead, move forward with it.
Not to drain each tax.
There isn't any, is there?
There's five dollars.
Five dollars, okay.
Oh. Yeah, just five dollars assessment.
Thank you. You'll have to pay the drainage tanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can anybody do that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Like if I stopped and gave you five dollars, it's like, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, cuz that's not on the certificate, that's not, that's, that wait, wait, that is on the certificate. Yeah, on the certificate, there was no property taxes, it was just a five dollar gradage assessment then, special assessments.
Right.
So.
Okay.
We have no way to abate.
Right, right, yeah, yep, oh, we'll take care of that.
Would someone like to make a motion to abate taxes on Twitter, there are you, DeWitt Street in Laverne, Iowa? So it's presented, Kai? I need a second.
I'll second.
Factor. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Abstain. But let the record show that Carter abstained.
And we can talk some more on that, so.
Yep.
We'll hold, so. Motion carried unanimous. Minus Carter.
Thanks, Nick, yep, I'll be in.
Thanks.
Okay.
We're up to county engineer's contract, do you, do you want Doug here or do?
Yeah. Hey Doug, we're ready for you in the boardroom. Thanks.
Excited to have that one taken care of, we're hoping to. Have that found.
They not here.
Think I'll grab some water while Jack's.
I'm not taking full break.
I have sinus or
Or sinus thing?
Yeah. I hate the smoke from the wildfires the other day cuz I was outside above and shit. Yeah, it just been.
Saturday's there.
Yeah, that was.
This Saturday.
I think that was worse than Saturday than it's ever been.
Well, got up Saturday morning, it wasn't so bad, my neighbor was burning. Uh, it's got a burn pile over there and and next door and all of a sudden, there's smoke coming from that, it's a little smokier than from a burn pile.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Very, left in Canada.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, just in the apartment.
I don't know.
It's been going all summer, yeah.
I could be nothing, what country you could say? The house you vacated, Carter, was that Ramus used to live?
Uh.
Years.
No, like Buranus? So you're saying, no, that wouldn't be Buranus. Uh, not theirs, but I don't know, I guess I don't know who used to live there years ago.
I don't know Bob Ramus used to live on that.
Oh, Bob, I don't know, yeah.
It did for twenty years.
Before me, yeah. Oh, that was uh, Brian Williams, he's lived there for thirteen, fourteen years, but or he don't live there now, but.
Wait, so this is actually doesn't happen to Saturday?
They didn't bore on Saturday, I don't sure, you know, they didn't bore on Saturday. It's very. Oh, didn't? They, they pulled in the bay. They were.
I have a beer fly, it was just a penny loss.
No. The electric companies are yesterday, I stopped customer, they're gonna pull the juice, he said that we won't pitch you the juice off till next week.
Yeah.
They weren't very happy with how much that box by then. Cuz I don't know why they went to some. I've been back down, they was, we gotta pay for it, so I don't know why they.
Yeah.
Forty three. Yeah, you just why I don't, don't want to talk about that.
Yeah, they took it to.
Well, it's not.
We'll move.
This way.
Yeah, that's a movement. Fine.
Yeah, twenty. Yeah, everybody's back, um. Carter, did you put this on the agenda?
I did.
Or filed it?
Oh. Yeah, so I guess my first question is to Doug, um, you heard our conversation last week, are you willing to have discussions about amending the contract that we're currently in now, since it auto renewed or not?
Um, again, and I guess I was not I was under the impression that this was discussion amongst the board supervisors and uh I would appreciate some sort of a invite, and I think the agenda item, it doesn't say anything about who is supposed to be here, what discussion is supposed to be done, so I am here to observe.
After last week's meeting, I guess we could stay during the meeting that it would be on the agenda today and what we'd like to discuss.
And I mean, I think that discussion is amongst board supervisors also, Carter.
I I think I fairly clearly asked for you to answer that question twice and asked if having it on the agenda.
I have not interested in renewing or. I didn't kind of.
Okay. That answers that question for me. Anyone else have anything for this topic at this time?
Um, being that it does state um, in point eleven of the contract that this contract may be amended, revised, renewed, or extended at any time only by written approval of the board and the engineer, uh. Would it be all right to put something, uh, could I submit something in writing? Why not submit it, but could we move forward, can I submit something in writing to be approved on the on another agenda for the board to to amend and put in writing for for acceptance from the engineer as well? Changing the language in in one section of the of the contract. Because the board can submit writing, but both sides have to submit writing, I understand that, but. Could I, could I do that?
Um, if you you can at any given time, if you want to.
Sure.
I I'd appreciate it if you wait until Jack was back, so you.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
So he'd have input in.
No big, big rush, yeah.
Yeah.
But I I have, I think I have a an idea um for for language uh change in one section of of um of the contract here regarding the unanimous vote clause. Uh, but if I could submit that, I'll submit that via email to the board and to Doug um, prior to when we would have that, you know, a couple of weeks prior to when we'd have that on the agenda. I'll 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 just type that up this week and um, when is, when are you back, Jack?
We got six meetings.
Next two. You're gone next week, or you're gone, you're gone in two weeks, two weeks.
Of the eight.
Be the same, it'll be the next week.
August eight, we put it on for August eighth, I'll I'll submit language to the board and and I'll copy Tammy in that as well.
You talk to me after the meeting so we can decide and then word it in.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
I can alter me.
Do you want anything in the record or we just that we put it to a future date, you don't want that thing in minutes?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be on the agenda for, so that's, that'll be.
Yeah.
Today's agenda.
Yeah, it it could be on the minutes that we'll talk about it on the eighth, that'd be fine.
Correct.
Yep, but I guess. That's all great to also tell Doug what was going on prior to him getting in there about about the middle rope, so he's not blind sighted by that.
Oh, that's good, well, that's.
Figured we'd talk.
We're.
We're not.
Yeah, we'll have that, but that's.
Different.
That's why we need that, yeah, we're in discussion.
Well, we'll go to our next agenda item. Discussion decision on construction in the right of way. We have one item or holder?
Uh, yeah, there's actually two requests, uh, one is from Interstate Power and Light. Uh, this would be kind of west of Burt. Um there is a hog confinement, uh, pork confinement going up and um, Interstate Power and Light would like to install one span of overhead utilities on two hundred and eightieth street, the north side of two hundred and eightieth street, and then for the remainder of the way in the road right away, I would recommend that the board would approve this request.
I would move to approve the request for construction in the right of way. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Kai, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimous.
All beans out that part last fall.
What's that?
The Plum Creek pigs.
I'll just bring these all up, both of these two.
Okay.
Happens. The second request is by Midland Power, uh, they are removing a overhead and replacing it with a underground, so they'll be borrowing the proposals to bore from the east side of that, under E of Avenue. Uh, under the road into the west side of Agent Avenue, and again, I would recommend that the board put approval of this permit as well.
I would move to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by factor. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried unanimous.
Oh, sir. Thank you. Very good, thank you, that's all the construction road right away.
Amy, would you want to read that motion to Doug for the bridge? Whenever.
Well, um, can I read the motion to you that the board made earlier in the.
For the bridge.
It was a motion by that I have to get to the right way. A motion by Spencer, second by Wacker, to direct the county engineer and the county attorney to look into classifying one sixty fifth avenue between two hundred and fiftieth street and two hundred and sixtieth street as a class C road.
Okay, then, requests needs to come from landowners, level C mainly.
That was new ones.
He would have.
Start coming writing from all the landowners affected.
Is that in the code section?
That's in our ordinance side of the league. The chair, this uh, this is like Greg Albert, he's one of those.
This, uh, this is a, maybe over, these one, those two are the problems.
Hi, Jane.
Hi, Greg.
How are you doing?
Greg.
Are you gonna tell them what's going on?
There you go, you got any comments on?
Right now, I don't.
It affects you, I'm.
I mean, we, Kusuk County has an ordinance for level C roads. I could certainly, uh. Summarize it, but. I. I believe that landowners. Need to. Request it. That. Landowners would have keys to that. And. The county would have keys to it as well. Um, whether. Or not, it's a level C road, it would still, I believe. It is the intention to put a private bridge on a public road.
Yes.
And. Whether it's a level A, whether it's a level B, whether it's a level C. I think. A private bridge on a public road. Is still going to have the same. Same problems, uh, no matter what. One. That stream, I'm fairly confident. Would be under the jurisdiction of the US Army Corps and the Department of Natural Resources. Privately owned bridge on public road. If there are any problems. With. US Corps of Engineers, Department of Natural Resources, they're gonna come back to people that have the jurisdiction of the road. Which is Kusuk County. Two, if it's over twenty feet. We are going to have to. Have that bridge analyzed, posted for weight. We would be responsible for that because, again, it's a public road, we, we would have to do what is necessary. Three, if there was ever an accident. You're just opening Kusuk County's pocket. Right? Um, I will follow through with Todd, who will get the information, but. Simply, simply put. A private bridge on a public road, it isn't gonna eliminate anything. I went downstream from. This location. There are a handful of privately owned bridges. On privately owned properties. It is done. Again. A handful, and I invite you guys. Look yourself. If anyone would like to go out to this location, I more than will. Put you in a pickup. But, uh. I think there are real. Concerns that from a public standpoint. It should be addressed, whether it's a level C road.
But what's, what is it, uh, related at now?
There's no.
No, the road.
It is, uh, road closed, level A, it, it was never.
Level A.
Put it.
Level A means what? Nothing done to the road at all?
No, it was level A, it's regular road. But the road is closed, we regularly maintain it from east south.
Did he send you the pictures? From the south, what about the north?
Um, we go down from the north every now and then, I don't know what the last pictures he sent.
But it showed there's nothing being done with that road.
Um, I don't believe there's too much travel from the north.
Right.
It, but it's.
Did he show, did he send you?
I have received info, recent photographs, no jack.
They were all in our package.
They were in our package.
Probably sent them to your office and put them in, I would imagine.
I don't know, they're there.
He, he wouldn't have access to put them in there.
Well.
Well, you can look at.
He gave him.
Again, I'm hearing her.
Something I don't.
I know we go out there, Jack, it's. The thing about it is it.
Where are they recently?
From the north, there's just not too.
There's.
What did you think?
What was that?
Me or Carter?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm looking to see.
He's looking at the details on the photos.
Marge, put them in there.
Okay, so we must have arrived.
Okay.
Today.
Yeah, it's got a date of today. Okay.
Why you put them there and I seen the board?
They would have had to have been in there before today.
Why?
Because I know I looked at them.
That, that was there yesterday.
It would, yeah.
I didn't know that. Well, okay, so the date is. Yeah.
Oh, yeah. But.
They taken was seven eleven, so let's take that's eleven.
Recent, and we can certainly, we'll go out there and prepare this.
Uh, date created, so that probably would have been the date that it was put in, was the fourteenth.
I mean, you go, go to where Dick and Lynn's house is at. You know, it is, but.
But you're, you're farming it right now, Greg.
See, I own this.
You, you don't.
There's, uh, these are tenured acres, that's what it feels like.
It doesn't look like it's easy to get to.
Okay, I. That's.
Yeah, like the drive there. There's a year or so. So I can get down in there to maintain them. And you're, you're fine. Their gate was too far to the north, and I could get the tractor, disc, and that's the way they put, you know, there's thirty feet on the drive to pull in, it's nice.
Good.
I don't get those road. Well, I don't. It's that, it's that actually.
Well, we. Last thing we want to do is make it.
I mean, I.
Bad.
Yeah.
Worse.
Yeah, I gotta go around to the north side. And it's not.
You come in from both ends, you don't have a bridge across.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I gotta walk the grid, uh, that you have to get across.
Okay. If, if you have any concerns, Greg.
Yeah.
To Doug.
Do you enjoy anything you have to hold in?
Yeah.
Yeah, Greg, if we were to. Fake heat road. All, all adjacent, I know it should be north by the bad. I, I did, you know, level C road.
Well, no, that goes, it's about fifteen and now, it's good for the.
Correct, and it doesn't get a whole heck of a lot in the graphic.
The land to the north of you, they access that from the gravel road then to the west?
To where, young ground. They're gonna take that. gravel, they got, they go down the hill, they get that. They, they make that get out, they get. But it's. They're hard.
Any other comments or questions?
For the bridge or for, for the road?
Oh, for the roads.
Uh, no, I.
Anything else, Doug?
Uh, yes. We received gravel crushing quotes, I will open those next week. We'll get an agenda item on there, so we can listen to that, um. Wind projects, uh, Kusuk.
Thank you.
Wind energy phase two and the Lennyard Wind, uh, Wind Project. Uh, there are a lot of weeds on the entrances, the seed did not really take off this spring when they were finishing. We have been in contact with them to get those sprayed, and they are spraying those. Um. Josh, last week you brought up, uh, out by, uh, Meadow Ridge.
Mm-hmm.
I could not find, if you go east of that road, I couldn't find any problem there. So. I, I don't exactly know what you mean.
I got some pictures, I was, I was gonna stop down last week, but. Good luck, but, um. They had sent some pictures, I'll show you the pictures that I got.
Yeah, you could forward them to me.
Okay.
So, but yes. Um. Next week, we have the Iowa Department of Transportation is, uh, doing a traffic count on all road, not all roads, but certain roads in Kusuk County. Uh, so if you see hoses going across the weather, be aware of it, um. The traffic counts are out.
Go ahead.
Uh, resurfacing projects, we are expecting them to move in their plant anytime now, according to their pre-construction conference. Uh, we've not heard from them, but, uh, we would assume that. Resurfacing will begin soon. The project, bridge project south of Itonka. They started driving pier piling and hit, uh, a rock layer that was identified in the soundings. Uh, they are bringing in jetting equipment, so that is supposed to be going on probably as we spew. And then hopefully the jetting equipment will, uh, work that for sand, gravel, rock, out so the piling can go down. Uh, thistles being sprayed in the north, north third of the county. That is, should be completed today, patching, uh, we've completed, uh, the bridge that is west of Big Six. Uh, elevator, the four-way bridge and Culver to the east of the four-way bridge, a bolted patch. Uh, Oak Lake Road, we had a patch in the Hannah Blacktop, we had a patch, uh. Blacktop service moved out for a week, um. We, we'll, we still have P sixty-four south of. Itonka and the bridge at Irvington to patch, and then we have a couple that have patched at, uh, north of Winmore and near. Where Nick Rams is, so we'll get those completed. Um, D sixty lateral one, they are boring under A sixteen. They were digging the pits yesterday and then schedule was that they'd be boring under A sixteen. I have been up to the Highway fifteen Bridge Replacement Project recently, we still have our open positions, um, we need to schedule some interviews. Uh, Sway City Shop, you may have noticed, we did buy some materials from West Bend, uh. Lumber Yard, and those are going to Sway City Shop, we'll be putting a new front on that. Uh, Albona Fire Department last week called me. Um, they would like to use the Irvington pits for an exercise, uh. The exercise is, if you can. For lack of any other better terms, they have some sort of a, uh. Pond or pool, man-made pool that they can put water in, they set a pumper truck up to it, pull the water out to spray out fires. They want to do an exercise with their people as far as, uh, making sure that everyone is, uh. Aware of how that works and making sure that it works well. Um, so some Monday night, if you see that going on down at Irvington Pits, I have granted them permission to do that. I'm working on the annual report, I did not get that playground sign engineer report completed, working on that this week. And then, uh, end of year fiscal reports for self-insurance, to get some things taken care of with that I'm working on, so that's kind of a. Comments from the discussion points from the county engineer.
Anything else for Doug?
Just one last thing, I got a phone call up, I was looking at the street, uh, two hundred and thirtieth street, it's down where Tony Sink and. That mile west of the, um, Itonka Blacktop there, and then Ruben Scowall Road, mile, going mile east, um. I know you're in contact with BMW. Quite a bit with them, and there's giant ragweed growing in the ditch there, um, along both Tonys and Rubens Road there. Um, so I don't know if they, I know they go back and spray or do touch up on Fridays, so, you know, maybe that was a spot that they did touch up, um.
Ragweed is not a noxious weed.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But having said that, we still try to.
Sure, sure.
In certain situations. So this would be. Two hundred and thirty street. One mile east and one mile west of P sixty-four.
Correct, yep, yep. That was the area I got a call on, so.
But no, uh. We sprayed for noxious weeds.
Sure, yep, yep.
Our. Our contract is.
Yep, yep.
Or noxious weeds.
Anything else for Doug?
Was somebody gonna get ahold of Todd also, or is that mine duty?
Oh, I, I'll send him here.
All of us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks, that's.
Thanks.
Ten minute break before you do drainage?
Or do you wanna just get it done?
People.
Or you wanna just get it done?
Do you want me to call Marge or do you?
Call Marge.
You're the winner.
Yeah, I see that.
Roger, I think you had one.
Two.
Yeah.
Two?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, two.
Two to four. Oh, Howard.
Sure, we did fix that once before in Darren Jensen's.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'll look if there is old weeds.
That makes any difference.
Hey, Morgan.
Marge, we are up to drainage. And I see we have some requests for repairs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Won't be able first?
I'll add it.
I got, uh, on drain seventy-eight, number seventy-five, request is in Buffalo, Redding Shooture. It's a broken tile, needs repair, and it's on CRP ground. And I'll have Brent do it. And my next one is on drain eighty-three, and the request number is seventy-seven. It's, uh, on lateral fourteen T. And Lots Creek, and there's a broken tile in the water, wait. And I'll think about who's gonna do that one.
Great, I mean, I got seventy-one, heberin section fourteen, broken tile for Darren Jensen. And seventy-two is also heberin, section eighteen. And seventy-two is also heberin, section eighteen. Washout on East Bank Outlet Pipe, needs rip wrap round, he says. Also Darren Jensen. Seventy-three, Andrew, um, Lowes. Blood yard section two, um, hole in buffer strip near the, near the ditch. And on the main tile there. Seventy-four is for Michael Birdie, broken tile, uh, Greenwood section twenty-two. Seventy-six is Lincoln thirty-two. For Rob Price, broken tile, sold in. In beans and it's flagged along the fence line, looks like.
Happy I'm not doing this one, everyone wants to do it.
Only motion for supervisors to handle their drainage requests, repair requests.
Motion on the second on the floor, everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We got a minute to talk to Ron about the water.
Yeah, so I haven't had a chance to talk to Ron about this yet. He was done on Friday and I completely forgot about it yesterday, but at Thursday's department head meeting, Todd had mentioned that. When we had that heavy rain and it came through the front door at the Mado wet. That they also had leakage in their office where there was water standing. And so he was wondering, uh, Kyle and Roger whether also if, um. He wanted to bring it to our attention because they did have some files that got wet. If we could look into it and uh, find out why it's. Was under the understanding that it didn't come from the hallway, that it came either through the cement block or through the windows.
Uh, I think, yeah, but he didn't know for sure.
So.
That's not the first time.
We wanted to talk to you and find out, uh, yeah, that's what he said. To find if there's anything we could do, he didn't know if there was drainage and any kind of drains from when they did the rock. Or.
We dug up that whole side of the building. It had been retard, insulated, there's tile there. But the water has either got down to where at the base level. And, and there's, that's where the tunnel is right along there, so.
Should we call Todd and see, so he can hear this too?
Yeah. See one for it.
That way he's, we're on the same page, I don't have to try to remember.
Hey Todd, we're talking to Ron right now about the water issues and stuff, if you wanna come up, you could join. Perfect, thanks.
Without being snide, my suggestion on the wet tiles, don't put your pile on the floor. I mean, that's kind of an old. March, but like we looked into, I, I've had my mother bomb, but you've seen. The guys that come and said no room, that goes out alongside the building, pumping that. It's like a slurry solution with, it's almost like a light concrete glue and it gets into those veins and then it solidifies. And had really good luck with that, I mean, the other option is tearing up that whole side of the building. I don't know what it is. Well, this is the first time, I mean, it's. So I know, it's been, and I don't, when it happened, when it started, everybody kind of thought maybe it started around nine months ago, so, but I'm not sure. It was before that, but at that point, we retard, it's, it's, there's B rock and tile down there. Okay. But it's just, whether that foundation has blew, I don't know. And, and, and it isn't every rain, it's when we get a. Those gully. The gully washers, yeah. Cause I'm assuming that that tile, cause that tile goes along the whole side of the building and then connects in. I thought that we had tile. With the drain, yep. You know.
It, it isn't from the roof? That water runs over or?
No, because the scupper goes out, the scupper goes out the west side.
That's what I thought.
On that one, yep.
That wouldn't have any effect on that.
And this, I think, I don't know if it happened before, but uh, you know, I was mentioning at the department meeting that. Uh, this time it came through the, the doors and that in the front. Oh, the drain couldn't keep up, it, it rained so hard that it literally filled up that whole entryway and it was coming in the door.
So you don't think that tile's plugged that's there?
I don't think it's plugged. I mean, cause it, it drains every other time, but when you get that heavier rain, it just can't take it that fast.
So it, it wouldn't be worth it to run a camera down it, look at it, or?
Oh, you could probably try, but it.
Do you know what size tile it is?
Uh, that was a six inch.
Six.
Yep, alongside the building was.
And it, it dumps into the city storm sewer?
Yeah, the one.
On the street.
No, not to the street, it comes from the west heading this way and then taps in to where the drain goes up.
It's in the parking lot?
No.
It, it comes straight from the street on the west side, right over along.
All the way down here, but wherever that, but I say, I don't know where the, the drain goes, it's at the entrance. That drain, that, that trench drain there.
Yeah.
Whether that goes to the storm sewer, I have no idea where that goes, that's just always been there.
Okay.
Well, we redid the ramp, it just got hooked back up, that was back from Barney, it's still here, that just got hooked back up. But that tile that comes along the building has tapped into that.
Oh, so they're not too separate?
No.
Oh, okay, we probably should try and tell the place that then.
So I, when that tile got full, maybe then that tile was full and the water was. Coming out of the tile, maybe pushed into the goal?
Possible.
Yeah, cause.
If the water's coming in there, it means the tile was full.
Their type.
Wasn't trying, wasn't pushing water out of the tile and probably pushed it through, through the foundation.
Well, the tile could have made it worse is what we're trying, he's trying to say then.
Possible.
If, if it was overloaded, it was pushing through the foundations.
That's probably what happened.
And actually, if it was plugged or blocked on its way towards the street. Um, it could be draining through that rock or whatever along the foundation of the building on normal storms even.
Yeah, and didn't they do some work on the street? Where they dug it up or didn't?
Yeah, that was, that was more towards the corner, that's when they pulled the water line, the drain out of the old jail.
Good, that was more, that wasn't right there.
Yeah, that was all the ways.
Okay.
But that shouldn't have affected that.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't ever be, I've been here for a long time and I, you know, don't ever remember having problems until. You know, of the last maybe few years. So, I mean, we've had dilly washers before, so I don't know what it is, maybe displugged or maybe it needs to be looked at. All I know is we were wet. So.
Well, it. It probably behooves us to get a camera and go take a peek and see if it's partially plugged or. Totally plugged or really what's going on till you look in it. We don't know.
Cause like I said, that, that whole side of the building was, was dug up and it's somewhere, there's pictures of that, but it was all. All foundation coating, two-inch sort of foam, E rock. So they're coming over the foundation and through the windows? That day, I would have thought so. That day I would have thought so, but, but I know, but there's been days before that we went in there and there'll be a dribble coming out of there. And it's not that heavy of rain.
Parking lot really don't slope that way.
No, it, it goes to the west.
Yeah.
Except for the top there and that's what comes down. That's easy, we look into a gamer.
I think it'd probably be.
Good place to start.
Yeah.
Because, you know, ultimately if we continue to have issues with that, it's gonna affect, it's gonna. Uh, affect the boring and the waste coating, the, that side, so. You know, we put some good money into that, wanna try and preserve it, I don't know why it's doing it, but yeah. It's one of those things where something is, something is different than what it, what it has been in the past, and I don't know. Plug tile makes sense to me because of those things. But it's got, there's gotta be some, some crack of some sort because the tunnel doesn't fill up. I mean, if it's coming up from the foundation. Then it would, yeah. It would, it would be. Well, see, that's the odd thing too, because I asked, I think Willie, um, you know, if it's wet down below, cause it's below us, it's the. And. Well, in, in the tunnel goes, the tunnel goes right underneath your office and that tunnel. There's nothing down there, so. It's kinda odd. Yeah. I said, there's gotta be some type of separation in that foundation where they put the footing in to where when they start the building, if it's getting in, in through there.
That's kinda weird to, to me, that tunnel should be filling up.
Should be filling up. I don't know, it's a mystery, but maybe that's the easiest thing to do first, but see if there's something simple.
Yeah.
You wanna get all somebody around?
Yep.
You'll, if you need some numbers, get ahold of us.
Yeah, oh, there's a couple different places that, that have cameras.
Good.
Sometimes you gotta be careful that, they like going down sewer pipes, but they don't like running down tile.
Well, yeah, and that's what it's.
It's a little, it's a little tougher running down tile, if you can get your camera stuck really in the corner, dude.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if it's big enough, they'll, they'll shove it down there.
The only thing the county has is a locator to shove down and I don't think that's gonna tell us much.
Yeah. I've used Empire, I have services. For a lot of field tile stuff, but they're out of Mankato, I mean, they're better for the north end of the.
That's, that's a little bigger tile.
Yeah, but they, they do a lot of sewer stuff too, and they have, I know they have a. One of their cameras, they can send an auxiliary one out the side and go up like laterals to private homes and everything. So I'm sure they could do it, I just don't know which trailer they'd have to bring for it, but if we told them what it was, I'm sure they can do it. And the pictures are nice.
There's, they got, they got crawling one, they're do. That would work, Reddy's got one.
Yep.
On the shafts. I ain't physically not with it, I'm sure of it, yeah.
Hey, yeah, thanks, Ron. Appreciate it.
How much is it?
I've seen something new coming over here, I've never seen before this morning.
What's that?
Little drones flying in a field and there were. People in the back of a truck.
Yeah.
Going. Yeah, and they were spraying right by Bandcraft with two big drones.
Others.
In the same field.
They're spraying with the drones?
Yeah.
Wow.
Doesn't surprise me.
Uh, it was state mine, I, I think, I know.
That surprises me.
Yeah, I don't think I've ever seen that before where they were, they had an actual pad where they could land on, on top of the truck.
Interesting.
Yeah.
These are big drones, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they were, and they had lights on them.
Still have to have pilot's license for those.
You, these, these were large drones.
Yeah, yeah, you still have to go through, you gotta get your license and certifications, everything for it, yeah.
I'm not so sure they weren't five foot across, they, they were.
Oh, yeah.
They were, they were good sized. We're up to discussion with our auditor.
Hey, reminder, tonight is the Farm Bureau Appreciation Picnic at the Fair Downs from five thirty to. The time it goes, seven, seven o'clock. And then next week. On the twenty-sixth, Wednesday the twenty-sixth, is the countywide breakfast at. At Saint Michael's Parish Center in Woodmore and that's from seven o'clock to nine o'clock. I will be gone next week, uh, Wednesday through Friday. A calendar or an agenda for next week. To review the engineer study for science placement, MP forty and eight twenty-one, we have approving the quarterly reports. That's all the agenda is supplied. Year end is finished. So with the treasurer's office and the auditor's office, so we're now good with that. So we are now officially into our November fiscal year. Um, we will get our report sent out to Elizabeth at the auditing firm, she has a list of things that she requests. And then, um, they will set up a time when they can start with their audit, so. Be working on that. We're also working right now on taxes, so Christopher's going to go through that process. And we'll be getting that done here in the next week or so, so. Always busy doing some things, I think that's all I am.
Little big agenda for next week?
No, pretty fine.
We've had a lot of big agendas. Last couple months, so it's okay, there's a couple smaller ones, yeah.
Group, everybody signed up for Saint Michael's Parish on Wednesday?
Yeah, I, I RSVP'd, there's four of you going, Jack and I aren't able to.
Oh, that's right.
They have four of you, I have RSVP for yous.
Jack, did you have anything last week?
Surgery up here.
It looks good, it looks good.
Yeah, I got it all first try, so it's good. Carter?
Uh, I had no board meetings, but just point of interest, um. In Wright County, Board Supervisor meeting yesterday, they discussed. Um, a possible ordinance in regards to usage of the right of way and. Um, pipeline companies and, uh, that would affect pipeline companies. Um, and what the supervisor are saying that they don't have the authority, that Summit doesn't have the, excuse me. But they don't have the authority to grant, the supervisor don't have the authority to grant rights to companies to operate in the right of way without an ordinance. That was their reasoning, um, so that. They need, they, they're trying to draft something for the right of way to regulate that from a county standpoint, um. Should a company want to go through.
Is that for them to parallel the road in the right of way? Or just crossing, do you know?
Um, I don't think, I think it's both, or I mean, it's regulating the right of way as far as, in, in general, it's my understanding, but. I don't know how that all, all the language reads, but I would like to look into that and see what, what they're trying to do, but. Anyway, just letting you know that's been going on, um, the last couple weeks and they had a big public hearing yesterday and. Quite a bit of people there. Um, also, I did visit with, um, the ethanol plant in Goldfield. And, cause they were also approached by Carbon Sink, who had approached us. Um, in regards to methanol production facility. Um, because it is renewable energy industry, they. They, they gather their electricity from other renewable fuel sources and primarily wind energy, and so. The ethanol plant was on board up to the point that. They were gonna need to build around a hundred wind turbines in the Goldfield area in order to supply. A methanol facility because they require so much electricity, so that was kind of the. Put the kibosh to them wanting to proceed down in Goldfield and. And you know, I, I posed the question, okay, so we have a hundred and. I forget what the number is up north, you know, already around the ethanol plant, that's in that neighborhood, but. They would need to build additional ones because those are already being used elsewhere, you know, I mean, they would have to, so that. That was unfortunate to hear, you know, I, I was a little bit excited about it, but so, just letting you know that. There is that catch to the. That they, they have to use renewable fuel sources to power. So, however that looks and.
So unless we build more winter.
Unless we build more winter than the said, uh, methanol production facility is probably not. An option.
Yeah.
Not that it's impossible, but that's what they usually go to, so.
I talked, when I talked to him, he said a hundred megawatts. That's a lot of wind.
Yes, yes. Well, and that's what, you know, Goldfield is about seventy-five million gallons of production and. Lakota is over a hundred. And so, you know, they were quoting a hundred-ish wind turbines for Goldfield, it would be more than that for Lakota, so. Yeah, this, I don't know.
Hundred and quarter, hundred.
Yeah, I, I thought that was interesting information to share, but, yeah. But, no, that's all I got.
Hey, no meetings?
We kinda talked about before at the department head meeting. Thursday, water issue, we already talked about, but um. We talked about the um. Change in pay scale or uh, pay periods and all that, I don't. Know if you wanna touch on that, Tammy, otherwise I can do that, but um. Basically, there was. Enough questions and um. Discussion and lack of a clear, agreeable path forward, that it was kinda just decided to leave it alone for now. Then. Was just gonna bring up for discussion sake, I don't remember if we talked on it last week or not, but the Shelby County Court case has been decided. So, the judge's ruling is out, if. If anyone wants to look at it, they can.
Pretty clear.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna. Not gonna speak on too much of it, I read the summary and have started on other piece of it, I think it's thirty-seven pages if I remember right. But anyone who wants to know what's in there can read it themselves and make their own judgment, so.
Also, say, I thought we'd have to email on that.
Yeah, we.
We, well, we did.
We did, um, but any members of the public, et cetera, too, they can read it, um. So. That's what I had.
I went to the District Two Iowa Highway Program. Um, basically from Mason City to Algonah, it's putting here down, they got a few. Things to do yet this year and that, that stretch is done. Um, from Clear Lake. About two, if you know where Missouri is, they're gonna do an overlay on thirty-five, two, two overlays. Try to take care of the potholes, that's in pretty bad shape. From Algonah. To Whittamore. The road, the highway's in pretty good shape and from Whittamore West, it's, needs a lot of attention. And that's in a different district, so I. They're not, they don't have it as a priority to get that fixed, which is kind of a shame, cause.
It's bad.
Yeah, and uh, here's a map from the projects until two thousand and eighty, it's kind of interesting. Uh, went to the NiacoG meeting. We got some more new buses. Uh, still have two old, six old Fords left that wanna die all the time. And. Went back and looked at the shop and, oh, they're fixing, and they've got a really nice shop back there, I had never been back there before, I was impressed. It was clean and neat. And. Well, we talked about RPA funding for different. Uh, projects, most of those are in our trails. And we really don't have any right here by Algonah, they got. Garner and east, where most of them are. And that was about it. Except we've department head meeting, same thing. And safety. Went to the safety meeting. Uh, nothing really interesting. Been trying to get Nick Rand to be a member on the safety committee. That's, that's the only office that somebody isn't on it. And it was a short meeting, took fifteen minutes. Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Now. A discussion on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Post. We're adjourned.
Yeah.
You do.
You'll be here nicely, is that?
You won't be there really for the rest two weeks. Next two weeks.